Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll.
Graham Cassoon.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
Kleiner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
John Francois.
Here.
Burr.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Massey.
Here.
President Rodriguez.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
Approval minutes.
Tonight, we have the minutes from the common council meeting from September 4th, 2018.
Responsible by Aldman Johnson, seconded by Aldman Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondents?
Tonight, we just have one correspondence. It's a two lot subdivision for 529 Lafayette Avenue.
Order of planning?
That is all for correspondence.
For the good of the city, if you would like to address the council, please step forward. You have four minutes to address the council.
I know it was a difficult thing that he's talking about in reference to my same concern as, right, if someone has a municipal ID, they're like targeted because why do you have a municipal ID and not a regular ID, right? You completely categorize yourself as perhaps not being documented. But if there was a way to make it an incentive for all city of Middletown residents to have that ID, or everybody, it could be access to benefits like resident prices versus non-resident prices. How do you prove that you're a resident? I don't have to show you anything but my ID, city of Middletown municipal ID. Benefits that also include maybe discounts for local restaurants, local businesses. It's an incentive to try to get people to have an ID. I know they do this in New York City, in the city. It was a, it's a big thing because people can get access to museums, libraries, everything at no cost because they're a New York City resident, including also tuition that is like discounted for students who live in the city. So, I was hoping that that as an idea and as an incentive, what was it, I think 30,000 residents in the city of Middletown, about? Then there's no question who is not legal or not. Everyone has it. So, there's no way that any officer would believe that they, they're not legal or not because they understand that this is something that is pretty much required. So, I'm hoping just throwing that idea out would help, you know, any insecurities with that idea. And also in celebration of being Latino Hispanic Heritage Month, Heritage Month, excuse me, there are a couple of events going on. I know they're having at the Paramount Theater October 4th, I believe, no, October the Thursday. They're having a big event. Also, Element Square, where an art gallery on 21 North Street, we're also having an opening reception for celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with art from different Latino artists and other artists who are inspired by Latino and Hispanic heritage. So, just throwing out some information also for that, for the good of the city. And I hope this works out with municipal IDs. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor DiStefano and members of the council. As you may recall, I was here at the last meeting with a dozen folks looking to get in information on what Middletown is doing to ensure that immigrants feel safe in their community. Since then, we have seen an uptake in ICE activity and the displaying of hateful stickers throughout the city. We're here today to stand up for immigrants. We understand that the city has a commitment to building trust with the community and a desire to ensure that all officers understand that they should not be sharing information regarding a person's custodial status, release date, address without a judicial warrant. At the last meeting, I had the opportunity to talk with the chief about policies that can be adopted to ensure that officers understand their responsibilities as it relates to warrants. And it's my sincere hope that our communication will continue and we can ensure that all people, especially immigrants, are not denied their liberty without due process. Why is this important? Because as the police know, and we all know from experience, that trust between the immigrant community and the police is undermined when the police is working with the federal immigration officials, which is not the case here in Middletown. But we're also here to ensure that the people who put up those stickers know that this is a community that will not tolerate hate, a community that remembers that we are a nation of immigrants and that we will not support the current administration's deportation machine. We will work with the city to ensure that everyone knows their rights, that everyone knows that they don't have to open the door unless there is a warrant signed by a judge, a community where people feel like they can call the police if someone claims to be the police at the door. That is to say that if ICE comes knocking at your door, ask for a warrant, look for a judge's signature, ask to see their badge, ask their name, then call the Middletown Police Department to see if it is one of their officers. I wouldn't normally wear a T-shirt to a city council meeting, but I feel very committed to making sure that everybody gets the message that there needs to be a warrant in order to let somebody into your home. ICE must have a judicial warrant to come in your, to your home. I've brought with me some know your rights information. We've handed some out and they're underneath the chairs over here. I'm happy to leave some. I'm happy to send some. I really need help spreading the word. I'd like to work with community groups and city officials to ensure that people know their rights. I noticed when I came in that you have a channel 20 and we have videos that show people their rights and they're in Spanish. So, I don't know if I'm allowed to hand something to the mayor or who I hand something to, but if you want to review those and maybe run them on channel 20, they can be in all different languages and they can be in Spanish and they'll explain to people what to do if ICE comes to the door. Because I do believe that together we can stand for immigrants. And now that I have said my piece, it's my sincere hope that tonight the mayor and members of the council will share their efforts on what they're doing to ensure that immigrants feel safe. And certainly, the municipal ID is a step in that direction. And I will continue to work with the police department to ensure that their policies reflect their disentanglement from doing the work of the federal immigration authorities.
Hi, common council. My name is Alfredo. I'm here tonight in support of the municipal ID. And the reason that I've been working on this for so long is because every day now, I, people calling me, telling me that their husband has been deported. So, I go see him and you don't understand I mean until you see it with your eyes, the pain that this is causing. I walk in there, I knock on the door, they are afraid to open the door. So, I have to call them, it's me. So, they let me in. The first thing that I see is people, women, fears, crying, don't know what to do. And people, the little kid calling me puppy, when I'm not a puppy, and crying and screaming where puppy is. So, we've gone through this every, you know, most, a lot of times now in these days. I've been living here for 27 years and this is the worst that I have seen in deportations and everything. It's very bad out there. And really, we need at least something to protect our community. And like she say, get together and stand together. And we need to resist because it's happening. Not many people know, they come very early in the morning when nobody knows and nobody sees them. But they're here. And we are the ones that know first because they called. They are the only resource that they know for information. So, we need everybody's support in that. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. To Mayor DiStefano and to the city council, I am Pastor John Williams, and I think you all know me. I'm not changing the tone of everything. I do agree with everything that has been said tonight. And I am, I am confident without question that the city is doing everything it can to ensure that our entire community feels safe. Our entire community feels safe. It's been said that our country is a country that is a melting pot, but I tend to look at it, and you've probably heard the analogy before, that it's not a melting pot. It's more like a salad with distinct flavors. And I think that those distinct flavors make us stronger. And so, I'm confident that you all are doing everything you can to assure. And I offer, I offer my assistance or my help in any way that I can to make sure that everything goes along smoothly. With that being said, I'm not trying to change the tone, but I do want, I came tonight to express my sincere gratitude to Mayor DiStefano and to the city of Middletown, to Chief Iwanchu and the Middletown Police Department for their, their help with us on yesterday. Yesterday, we, we funeralized my father, Bishop Leon Williams, the 52-year pastor of the Greater Upper Room Apostolic Faith Church, pastored in this city longer than any single pastor and has now gone on to be with the Lord. And in the midst of that, we were in a little bit of a quandary because we knew that our, our church would not be able to house the number of people that would be coming into the city in order to pay their respects to him. Mayor DiStefano graciously and very expeditiously allowed us to step in and to use the Paramount Theater. And I want to thank Maria and all of the Paramount staff for everything that they've done for us. They were outstanding. And so, I am, I'm, my heart is heavy. Of course, you can know my heart is heavy because I loved my father, but I needed to be here tonight just to thank you all for so much for what you have done. I love, and I've said this many times, but I love this city. I've been offered congregations all over this country, larger congregations, but I've stayed here because I love this city. And so, my father served for 52 years. I'm third generation Middletown. My mother was a 1949 graduate of the, of Middletown High School. And so, my father served this city for many years, just as I've tried to serve my entire adult life. And so, on behalf of my family, the Williams family, and, and the Greater Upper Room Church family, and as well as another ministry that we have started here in the area, which we are serving this city as well, Faith Alive Ministries, we again want to express our sincere gratitude. Thank you for opening the door for us. Thank you for allowing us to have the room to celebrate. Thank you for your diligence in making sure that everything went smoothly. The police department served such, with such distinction, they opened the roads. I haven't seen anything like that since I've been down south watching a funeral go through, but they opened the roads for us all the way to the Veterans Cemetery in Goshen. And then the Goshen police jumped in and they helped us. And so, my heart, my heart is filled with gratitude for what you have done for us. And I pledge, I pledge to continue to serve this community in any fashion that I can, in any way that I can, because I do believe that as, as, as I've always said, that this community, this community, even though we might have our differences, even though we might have our different ideas, that when we do come together, we can do great things. And it's evident whenever I walk up and down the streets of this city that I see that. I see that. We might come into a couple bumps in the roads, but the truth of the matter is bumps, bumps happen and you're going to have to deal with it. And I leave this because I am a pastor, and with good and bad, with everything, we become stronger. There's a scripture that says, "All things work together for the good of them that love God," and the called according to his purpose. And so, that doesn't mean that all things feel good, but at the end of the day, they all work together for the good. So, thank you again. Have a wonderful night. I'm not going to stay. I'm going to get back to my family, but I just needed to come by and say that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, county, common council members. I'm here to talk about an immigration case. This case involves, this case involves a resident of Middletown who was advised by council to return to her native country to enter. If I may, I would like to read the letter that I have sent to Senator Gillibrand, Senator Schumer, and Assemblyman Maloney, as well as the president. I'm not too sure where these will go, although I do have to say, I did receive a phone call this afternoon from Senator Gillibrand's office. I also have to tell everyone about Carmel Wilson in Assemblywoman Gunther's office. That woman is a true asset to any of our immigrants in the city of Middletown. If I may, I would like to read the letter. And I have permission from the parents to mention her name. I'm writing to ask for consideration of a visa for Karen Danielle Cholito. Approximately one year ago, in July 2017, under DACA, Karen was advised by her council to return to Columbia for an immigration interview, which was scheduled by the National Immigration Center. And on all letters that I submitted, I submitted documentation. So, I attached Karen's applications. Karen came to the United States when she was six years old, and she remained in this country until June of 2017. Karen has been a member of the Middletown community for the past 18 years. I met Karen approximately 11 years ago when she was a student at Middletown High School. Karen graduated from Middletown on June 22nd, 2012. While attending high school, Karen enrolled, was in part of the school golf and the soccer team. After high school graduation, Karen enrolled at Orange Ulster Boses in a phlebotomy course, which she completed. She worked as a phlebotomist at Crystal Run Healthcare in Goshen until her trip to Columbia in July of 2017. Karen took advantage of every educational opportunity available. At the same time, while working and contributing financially to the family, she was enrolled in Ulster, Orange County Community College. In 2017, she was accepted in the lab technician program at the college and was to start her coursework August 28th, 2017. However, because of not being allowed to return to her home in Middletown, her position in that program was lost. Karen is a very determined young lady with strong moral and ethical values who wants to be a successful and productive citizen. She has been an asset to her family in helping to care for her two younger siblings, Camilla aged six and Gabriella aged 12, who were born here in the United States while her parents work. Her family ties are especially important to her. Her absence has caused both emotional and financial hardships for the entire family, including her parents, especially her younger sisters, and her grandparents, as well as herself. I understand that Karen's visa is not current and will not be current for at least another three years. However, what I was requesting was assistance in obtaining a non-immigrant visa, a B1 slash B2, so Karen can travel to see her family once or twice a year. Her parents are not trying to circumvent any United States immigration laws, but they are committed to Karen receiving her immigration visa in Colombia. It is a very sad case. This, this young lady is in Colombia. Her parents are here. Her whole family is here. She goes from cousin to cousin to, to, to stay in a home. I thank you for this opportunity. I'm not sure how many folks were aware of the situation. I just want others to be aware of what some people have to go through. And I stress again, she went back under advice of council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I honestly, well, first of all, my name is Jerome. I'm a active member of the organization of Nobody's Men Hudson. I'm also a current student of SUNY Orange Community College. And I honestly want to have something right down, you know, but I think it's not fair for me and for my community to, you know, I prefer express from the heart. I think the only risk that we are going to face is the risk of not obtaining the IDs. Because when we came to this country, a lot of us came in the hot sun, walking in the desert, with immigration behind us. So, it's not an easy experience. It's not a happy experience, you know, to remember. It's really hard. I don't, I don't want to, what's it called, not even to my worst enemy, I don't desire that to them. Because it's not, it's terrible. It's horrible. So, remember those experiences and being here right now, it's absolutely like unbelievable that we, if we could get over those situations, I think we can get over these ones as well. And a lot of people is struggling and having fear, including me, when we are driving, when we are getting out of our houses. When I'm driving to my school, I honestly, I don't know what's going to happen. I'm nervous. I have a lot of fear because of the police. Even if it's police here in Middletown, I have to behave like really well and try to not act like different or, you know, because they're going to notice it. And they're going to say, something is wrong there, you know? So, it's not that we're doing wrong stuff. It's just that because we don't have anything to support us, we don't have something that we can show, is they put us in that situation. And, you know, we don't want to feel like that. We don't want to change the culture. We don't want to do bad stuff. We have to understand both, both perspectives, the Hispanic perspective and American perspective. A lot of people don't notice that, but I understand that. We just want an opportunity. And I know that some Americans, they believe like, how are they getting something? How are they asking for something that is not on their land? But we came here because of a necessity, not because we want to, because we have like a family over there that we have to support. And it is not a fault, I think it's not a fault that our government are like really bad, as you guys know. So, we didn't came here for pleasure. We came for a necessity. And that's why we're standing here right now, because the ID is a necessity. It's not a desire. We want them, yes, but it's most because of a necessity. So, I'm just hoping that we, like, we're going to keep fighting anyways. We had, you know, already the, that breathe in Poughkeepsie. So, that's going to keep us ongoing. So, I just hope that you guys approve it, because as I said, it's a necessity. It's really a necessity. The risk is just not obtaining it. It's not because something's going to happen to us. So, don't worry. We're strong and hopefully we, we can, we can get them soon. Thank you.
Ignacio Sabello, the lead organizer for Nobody's Men Hudson, and thank you for your time. So, I just, my, my coming up here is just to ask for a date. We want a date. And I heard a couple, you know, people ask, when is this going to happen? I heard somebody said, two meetings from now. Are we talking about November 6th? Is this when this is going to happen? Is that the date? Because I, a lot of the people here are asking, they want a date. They want, you give us a number, a month, because going next month, next month, next month, it's already been a year. So, and right now, there's like my, my, my community member says, there's a bigger fear. They're literally, I don't know if you've been literally at your house night and day shaking. Every door, every knock at your door means you could be gone. I don't know if you guys, if anybody ever experienced that, but that's torture. And some of this stuff, like my friends are saying, you can't even walk on the street because you show a Mexican passport, it's not in the English language, right away that points you out, you're not from here. You are target right away, just by showing a different document. So, if you show something with an English language, it kind of gives you a little confidence to get out, go get milk. So, I'm here to ask again, what is the date that you guys can give us? Because we'll keep coming every meeting. And I'm pretty sure we're, I mean, we'd like to see you guys too, but we need a date. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the council?
Good evening. Good evening. Excuse my dress. I just coming from work and come over here. It's the first time. And it's a lot of bad people up there, immigrants, but it's many of them good. I got three daughters. Sorry, my name is Martine. And I got nephews. One, it's in the Navy. My niece, it's in the Marines. And my daughter serving the USA Army. And we are many good people there. And probably many of you guys know it's, somebody cut your grass, somebody come and clean your gutter. And if we don't feel protective from you guys, which the ones who be responsible to take care of this town, we don't feel capable to keep this town growing. Like many of the members, they say, when you show it's something that is not from this country, we already targeted. It happens many times everywhere. Even the simple thing like changing the coins and shop right makes you difficult because sometimes the people who don't like people like me, hair, black and stuff, they ask you for ID because they know that you don't have one. And you cannot change your coins. And sometimes you need it for buy your milk, bread, something. So, we just want to hear, not to force you to give us something, but improve us to make this town grow. Because this is our town. I'm feeling like I'm from Middletown. I've been here for 25 years. And I say, I got my people, my daughters, they serving in the army. So, it's many good people up there, but they afraid of it. They afraid because we are targets. And if we don't feel protected for you guys, which the ones responsible, like I say, we don't want to still leave it in the dark. We want to come to the bright and make this town great. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angel Gonzalez Rais, and I work for Nobody Leave Men Hudson. My dad too. And, and I want to say that we want our country to be nice and not bad because we want everyone to be, to be together and live with everyone for, for nobody can be alone. So, we want everyone to be together and we're family and our country wants to be nice. And all of us have to be nice, not bad. And everyone should be nice to everyone for everyone can be nicer to you.
Anyone else who'd like to address the council? Reports of department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just to update you, we had a community development agency meeting this evening, and we're moving forward on one of our rehabs for the homeownership program on Ridge Street. So, construction and rehab will begin shortly on that. The bids for the facade program, for the downtown facade programs are going to be going out for eight of the awarded buildings sometime next week. So, that'll all be posted on our website. It'll be in the legal ads. And we're hoping for numerous contractors to come out and bid on these projects. And also, like it was mentioned before, the Orange County Partnership and the Business Improvement District and the city are teaming up for a Latino business mixer. And it's this Thursday night. You could go to our website or the Orange County Chamber website to get details. And it's, that's all I have for this evening.
Any questions?
Anybody has any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. EPW Commissioner.
Good evening, council president, council members, mayor. I'm going to, I'm going to try to move quickly in there because I have a few items I wanted to update you on. So, if you have any questions for me, please give me, give me, ask me when I'm done or during my presentation. The roundabout is open for traffic. We're very proud of it. I think it's a very efficient means of controlling traffic and a calm, a traffic calming device. means of controlling traffic and a calm, a traffic calming device, um, started this morning, and we had, I would say minimal hiccups in there, which is, which they are expected. This final striping is not complete yet, so you will see us working still in, not us, the contractor, working still in the street, you will see DPW guys helping out as well, uh, putting more permanent marking. The rules for the roundabout are very simple, however, we have put them on our website, in Channel 20, on our local, all our social media outlets, showing what you need to do in order to navigate your way through a roundabout. Um, if you want to make a left-hand turn, if you want to drive right through, the most important thing is you gotta remain calm, and just slow down as you are approaching the roundabout, please, that's the whole objective of the roundabout, it's a traffic calming device, so, you need to slow down. Also, if you see any car within the roundabout, please allow them the right-of-way, they have the right-of-way, you cannot cut them off, allow the car that's in the right of, in the roundabout, to come out, um, to come out and just continue. Once you have a chance to get into the roundabout, then you can enter, otherwise, you'll have to yield, you'll have to give them the right, the right-of-way. Whichever car is in the right, in the roundabout, you have to wait for them. It's, that's a very simple, basic rule, in there, otherwise, just slow down, please, and be courteous to others, don't try to cut anybody off. Um, the police department is there, and I want to thank the Chief of Police for sending his men over there to monitor the traffic, and, um, and control any situation that needs to be controlled, but so far, nothing, nothing major, uh, knock on wood. Weather permitting, we're gonna finish the striping, uh, tomorrow or the day after, weather, weather permitting. The Elm Street, very quickly, the project is moving along in there, we're expecting, we said by the end of this month, it should be completed, the whole road, the water line, and the sidewalks, and the asphalt, and we are sticking with this schedule. Um, 38 Wisconsin in there, I know Alderman, Alderwoman Ramkassun, Alderman Johnson, Council President Rodriguez, and the mayor, and the rest of the councilmen, they've been pushing very hard to get this building down. Finally, it is coming down in there, as the entire building, as asbestos-containing material, and we had the funds for it, and they thank you for providing the fund to take it down, and, um, it should be done by, uh, end of this week, early next week, you know, because of the weather, we had to be held back a little bit. After that, the contractor will move to 99 Wickham Avenue, asbestos abatement has been done, it's right next to the Townsend Building across from the Thrall Park, um, that will be demolished also, end of next week, uh, end of this week, early next week, weather permitting. All the asbestos has been gone, so, it's gonna be just conventional demolition. Major milestone has been completed with the Manhattan Brook, uh, West Main Street, um, the project, drainage project, uh, the, uh, precast side walls of the, uh, stream, or the Manhattan Brook has been, they've been established. A major, another milestone, which is basically pouring a 12-inch concrete slab at the bottom of the, uh, stream has been done, it's been taking the flows very nicely, so, that's so far, so good in that aspect of it. Um, TD Bank, as you know, the city is selling TD Bank, there was underground fuel storage tank, the city is working with the contractor to remove it, they started today, unfortunately, they found some minimal contaminated soil around it, so that pushed the project back a day or two, which we mean, which means we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to remove that contaminated soil. New York Rising, the mayor and I, we had a meeting with the technical engineers in there, picking again, West Main Street as the primary project for New York Rising, and, um, repairs to the Manhattan Brook and the Draper Brook structures on as need basis, and as much as we can afford, uh, to cover, to, to, to come up with the $3 million that we need to spend, or we can spend on this project. We applied for about, uh, seven different grants for New York Bridge, in order to get more grants, hopefully, to repair, to repair more sections of the culvert, such as Grand Street Crossing and so on. So, we're working with New York Rising, we're waiting for instructions from New York Rising regarding the, uh, public hearing or public information, whatever is needed, in order to meet the grant, and we will do. We continue to focus on minimizing the infiltration and inflow into our sewer, sanitary sewer collection system. All this rain is really, uh, you know, it's, it's overwhelming, but luckily, we're seeing less impact, because we've been more successful in finding more cross-connections between storm sewer and sanitary sewer. So, the reason why I'm updating you is to urge the public, please, if you have any downspouts connected to your sanitary sewer, or if you have any sump pumps connected to the sanitary sewer, it's against the law, uh, we will be penalized by DEC, you will be penalized by us, fined by us, and taken to court, so, please disconnect it, because it hurts us tremendously, and we're spending countless hours to try to find the sources of infiltration, so, help us out. There is a resolution tonight before you for lead water services in there, and basically, it's a grant from the State of New York, Department of Health, in the amount of $533,000 to go around and replace, uh, uh, lead services in there, because we know the story with lead, and that will establish, uh, the, the, um, line in order to draw money from this, uh, from this account, and the bids are out already, and they are due in a couple of weeks, I believe. And, um, with that, I will conclude my remarks, if you have any questions for me.
Any question for Jacob? Thank you, Jacob.
Evening, everybody. Must say, it's surprising how many people really watch, watch this on the news, because last month, I gave no report, and people came into my job and said, "How can you not have any report?" So, tonight, I'll have a report. Yes, you, you did comment on it. First off, we have our open house on Sunday, um, October 7th, that central firehouse from 12 to 3, along with, um, our recruiting committee will be there as well, for anybody that wants to stop in and volunteer. Uh, we participated in a couple of community events, uh, this past month, Touch a Truck, uh, the farmer's market, um, and we had a rib-beating contest at Texas Roadhouse with proceeds for the veterans, uh, we competed against Circleville Mechanic Town, and, uh, we came in second place in that. Uh, we had 94 calls for the month, uh, one structured fire. We have two recruits graduating, um, from the academy in Montour Falls, uh, this Thursday, and then they'll be going through the break-in at the firehouse, um, and they should be placed on apparatus, uh, probably around the first of the year or so. Um, and we have one recruit that started the Westchester Academy on, uh, September 17th, and that's a, um, 17-week program, so, he'll be in there. Uh, we'll be out on Halloween, uh, at different locations in the city, watching out for the citizens and handing out candy. The roundabout, uh, as, uh, the DPW Commissioner mentioned, opened today, we took apparatus through there today, um, numerous directions, and, uh, it was a breeze, everything went very well with it, ladder trucks and the pumppers, so. Um, and there is a, a resolution, um, on the agenda tonight for the additional funding, uh, for the apparatus, that's being ordered for the department, um, truck 3's been replaced in engine 2, and, thank you for everything that you do for us.
Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, chief. City Treasurer.
Good evening, again. Uh, the budget process is underway, uh, we've got a good start on it, and the actual meetings with department heads will start this week. The credit card system is now up and running for paying water, sewer, and taxes, both online and at the window, and, uh, we've had auditors here, we, we've got our outside auditors that were here for the first part of the year, and then the state controller sent a, a team in, they've been here about a month, and we expect them to be here two, three more weeks, and, uh, that's pretty much what's going on.
Any question for Don? Thank you, Don.
Uh, good evening, uh, just a little update, I know you have some unfinished business about the closing of Highland Avenue, so to give you a little bit of information, what's happening on October 27th, it's the YMCA, the Elks Club in the city, combining for a big Halloween block party, um, all those agencies are taking on something different. The reason for closing the road is safety, a lot of kids will be walking from the one Y building to the other Y building, a lot of people will be parking in the Elks, there will also be a trunk-or-treat, um, agencies, businesses, churches are able to put their cars for trunk-or-treats, we're already up over 20 of them, and registration doesn't stop till October 19th, we're expecting about 40 cars, which will actually line Highland Avenue, where people will walk between the Elks, the Y, and the Liberty Street Y. So, it is just mainly for safety concern, expecting a big crowd dealing with those three big agencies. And the only other thing I want to touch on tonight is, uh, Foreman Bianchi and myself, to meet with the architect for the Dabbage Park expansion, something that is very needed in this town, with all the youth sports we have, it'll be a multi-purpose field, it will have a four-lane, a five-lane walking track around it, you know, concession stand, bathroom, so it gives us a whole nother facility for our youth to be at, and the, the support we've gotten from Bonisek and Gunther, and just this council is wonderful, it is a much-needed thing here, recreation gets bigger, our population gets bigger, and, and we need more facilities, so, thank you, everybody, for their support, that is, that's a great thing right there. Thank you.
Any question for Chris, Almond Johnson?
I just had one question with respect to the Dabbage Park extension, uh, as far as I understand it, we're gonna work on the, the sod and the plantings for the fall, and then break ground in the spring, is that still the timeframe you were led to understand?
Uh, we're, we're still waiting, you know, with the architect, but what'll be happening, I mean, from the parking lot right on out, and we're hoping with the funding to actually have that pretty much done by July of 2019.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chris. City Clerk?
I just want to bring your attention to two resolutions tonight, one, uh, we do every year, and that is moving the council meeting for Election Day, uh, that Tuesday, we'll be, be moving it to Monday, and also, the resolution to approve the Halloween curfew, uh, that will be going on the website, also in the newspaper, and I also will be sending that to the schools, so they can let their students know about that. Uh, the police chief, uh, did okay that, and he was, he was fine with the times and the days, and that's all I have for this evening.
Any question for John? Okay, thank you, John.
Good evening, and, um, I'll let it begin by thanking all the members of the common council, the employees of the city of Middletown, the residents of the city, and family and friends on the, on their support and kindness during, uh, the passing of my dad, which was on September 14th, and, um, whatever you did, um, the, the good words and, and the support that myself and my family received from, um, from everyone here at City Hall and in the community itself. Uh, my dad was a good man, he's, um, lived to be almost 90 years old, and, um, really led a good life and had a good run, so, he, uh, he's looking down upon us tonight, as we, uh, discussed many of these issues, and actually was a major advocate for the immigrant issues, considering that his mom and dad, uh, were Italian immigrants, and experienced some of the same things, not all of them, but some of the same experiences as the community behind me, um, has, um, laid out here. Um, also, um, thank, um, Bishop Williams for the kind words for, about his dad, his dad I met many years ago, um, was an icon in the community also, uh, 52 years at the One Linden Avenue, the Greater Upper Room Church, and, um, you know, no one has ever, I've never heard a bad word said about his dad, and, um, we, we did open the doors of the Paramount Theater for, uh, for the family, and, uh, it was necessary because of the, the size of the crowd, but, uh, we don't do that for everyone, and, uh, so, in case Alderman Passy's considering using it, uh, that's not going to happen.
Unless we charge.
But, um, we'll have his repass, "That holy dog," I told him. But, we're, um, but it, it is a, um, I, I think a sign of the appreciation of this community towards Bishop Williams and, and, um, his family, but, um, and while the family is great, but I think it was an outpouring of love and concern from our community towards Bishop Williams, and his 52 years of service here, so, uh, I wanted to, uh, just acknowledge, um, all of his fine deeds here in the city of Middletown. Some of the issues at hand, the, the ID program, as I said during the committee meeting, it's going on way too long. I mean, um, I introduced it probably close to a year ago, with the help of, um, uh, some of the folks behind me, um, and, and I've tried to approach it from both sides, whether you are pro-immigrant or anti-immigrant, I think it's a good idea for our community, and you've heard from the people themselves why they think it's a good idea for them, why they're willing to take the risk, um, which I think is minimal. Um, during the committee meeting, I mentioned about the, um, the concern that, uh, many people have when they walk out their front door, so, if you didn't want to help those folks, think of it this way, there's, there's a benefit to the community by them coming out of their front door, there's an economic benefit, if you have a store, there are, there are community benefits as volunteering, so, so, um, there's always two sides, um, driver's license, you know, I'm an advocate of giving driver's license to undocumented people, and, my advocacy might be, it's my personal reasons, but if you are opposed to it, just think, you had a gentleman up here, who obviously was undocumented, is fearful of driving, but he's unlicensed with no insurance. Now, wouldn't you want that person to have a driver's license and to have insurance, in case he was involved in an accident with a family member of yours? You're not going to get rid of everybody at the same time, so, I try to encourage people as I, um, and, and there is some strong pushback from certain members of the community, but I think there's overwhelming support in general for it, but there is a second way of looking at it, if you're opposed to the local issue of how we're addressing, um, undocumented people, and that is, by looking at it for selfish reasons, that you would want that person to have a driver's license and to have that insurance, and I can go on and on about it, but, and I won't, but, I support it, I introduced it, I think it's time to vote on it, um, it's, um, I think we're making it overly complicated with the amount of what-ifs, 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 um, we are going, one lady was up here talking about the, um, the plan for businesses, and that was part of the whole presentation that we had made, is that if a business would, it's, it's something to, different to everyone, and to a business community, it may be an opportunity to offer incentives, uh, for someone with a resident ID card, not a driver's license, but with a resident ID card to come in and get it. We're gonna mandate all city, um, officers, all city, um, planning board members, zoning board members, human rights members, any member of the city board or commission, will have to have a city ID card, as they should, and some of them do now, we do it through the police department, so, we're gonna change that mechanism of doing it through police to doing it through the common council office. So, it makes sense, whether you're for or against, I think the poster incident last week, um, really demonstrates why we should be doing more, um, with the, uh, we need to send a strong message to whatever group that was, um, the, in, uh, Europe, was it Europa, something, I, I don't even remember the name of it, but, they are a active white supremacist group in this country, and, we, we don't want that in Middletown. We, we are a community that was formed of German immigrants, then Irish immigrants, then, of course, the best group, the Italian immigrants, that came along, right? But, we're a community that's changed over many, many years, and our progress and our future lies in, like, any small city in the Northeast, is with your growth of your immigrant community, and that's not only here, you can look at Oklahoma, some of the reddest states in the country, where, um, I think, uh, in, in Southern Pennsylvania, where communities are being rebuilt, Hazelton, I think it is, they're being rebuilt by immigrant communities. You can look at North Street, from Park Circle down to 90 North Street, I don't believe there's a vacancy, a store vacancy, people are doing business, they're doing commerce, we're trying to work with that community more, in order to engage in some cross-marketing and things of that nature, but, when you go to a city, you always look for that, you know, Chinatown, Little Italy, or, you know, or, or things of that nature, and that's what we're trying to develop here in the city of Middletown, but, the investment is not only business, it's in our neighborhoods, and, we need to allow them to come out of their, of their houses. Now, on the, the other issue, which is what, um... Now, on the, the other issue, which is what Shannon from the ACLU addressed, and that is the issue of one specific incident and what is going on in the community with ICE. Now, the specific incident is she's referring to, I just want to refer to my notes here, was the case of Mr. Cervantes Garcia, longtime resident of the area, employed, thought he was here legal, I believe, from what I've read in the police reports. We do not share information with ICE. Let me just get that through publicly. We do, we do not, there are two different types of warrants. One Shannon touched on is a judicial warrant, and that is a warrant when someone has committed a crime somewhere and a judge issues a warrant for their arrest. We enforce judicial warrants on anyone, legal or illegal. Police run your name through the system, through the NIC system, and you have a warrant, you will be arrested if it's a judicial warrant. In this case, the gentleman had a, was pulled over for a traffic violation. He had a valid New York State driver's license, but a warrant came up, apparently, an ICE warrant came up. Of course, there was some confusion at the time because even the gentleman himself, from what I understand, from what I've read in the reports, believed that, that it wasn't a problem with immigration because he had a valid New York State driver's license. And apparently, at some point, he was able to obtain a valid New York State driver's license. He went to the police station voluntarily. Once the police did some more research and determined that it was an ICE warrant, they advised Mr. Cervantes Garcia, and he was free to leave. He was free not to come, and he was free to leave, and he did. He was not picked up by ICE for about another three months, and that appears to be the problem. So let me just reaffirm the position of the Middletown Police Department. We abide by what was then Eric Schneiderman, the Attorney General of New York State, but his continued policy of the state, is a guidance concerning local authority participation in immigration enforcement. The city of Middletown Police Department will only enforce judicial warrants. We will not enforce detainee warrants. The city of Middletown Police Department does not assist ICE in enforcing detainee warrants. We only assist any law enforcement agency in enforcing judicial warrants. So I, hopefully, that will make people relax a little bit more. But what is happening, and I think Ignacio touched on it, is there is a greater presence in the Hudson Valley of ICE. And what we have noticed is, is that when a name goes into the system, that on the, this is a national system, that that is identifying the location of the person and identifying whether there's a detainee warrant, and ICE is acting on those types of things. So if someone is picked up for drinking in the park, we do not notify ICE. But if you go into court and you are sent to Orange County Jail for any reason, there is the potential that you will be detained by ICE. So those are big issues. Those are federal issues, state issues. I know the governor is, is approaching many of these things and what protections they can put in place. Obviously, the Attorney General's Office addressed some of it, but it is not our policy to either work with ICE. We have our, you know, we're busy enough, our PD, we're not a federal enforcement agency, and, and we do not enforce detainee warrants, but we will enforce judicial warrants. On the driver's license issue, when I met with some of the members, I cautioned them against driving without a license. That is something you can be arrested for, and we'll turn your clock back on you very quickly. There was some discussion about possibly, and I might be overstating this, but where police could turn the other way when it comes to a non-documented person with a, who's unlicensed. That's not going to happen. We want our streets safe. We want people to be licensed. I'm an advocate for you getting your license, but you cannot drive on the streets of the city of Middletown without a legal driver's license. The community has to develop a plan of transportation within, possibly of getting back and forth to work. We are meeting, I believe, tomorrow or Thursday with Orange County Transportation Board regarding increasing public transportation. We have limited public transportation within the city, but there really isn't a lot of transportation back and forth to jobs. And, and that is something that this county is lacking, and we're hoping that the county will start looking at it as Legoland comes in and other large employers, AMES, that there is a need, not only for undocumented people to go to their job, but to, but for any person who can't afford a vehicle to get back and forth to their employment. Keep in mind, I know some of them who put up the posters are looking and saying, oh, they don't pay taxes. They do pay taxes. There, there are ways people work that are undocumented but do pay taxes through EIN numbers. So there are mechanisms in the system where people do pay taxes, but that's not the argument here. That's a federal issue and, and not open for discussion. So I want to, as much as I can, reassure people that we, we do not enforce detainee warrants. Chief Awantu was hoping to be here tonight. He went home sick today, but we will be issuing more direct policies and procedures within the department. But the case, the only case that we know of where the Middletown Police were involved directly was the Cervantes Garcia case, in which the gentleman came to the police department voluntarily and left on his own, on his own. So we're going to continue to work with Shannon and, and try to develop, see what policies that she has and forward it to us, and we're hoping that we'll be able to give more reassurance to the impacted community. And also, on the resident IDs, we're looking to load up a lot of people to come in and, and get those IDs and make that list very long so that people don't have to be concerned about a list of, that only contains potentially undocumented people. So that's my spiel there. If you have any questions, I'd be more to, more than happy to address them, but let me just complete the roundabout. Jacob touched on it, if you're following on social media, it's really kind of crazy. They were complaining about the roundabout before the roundabout was opened, and it did open this morning. It's going to be confusing for a little while, but it's, well, traffic will flow very nicely through this. The, the one legitimate concern that I saw, at least from my perspective online, was the traffic light down by Sterling Park in that area, that if that light was red, that traffic may back up. That traffic light will be put on blinking and, as it was before, and so traffic will flow right through that light. That light is there in case the other side of the street is developed and, but very, just very few cars that come out of Sterling and make a left there. So Don touched on budget. Our budget looks good. We do, we'll be meeting as a full board of estimate is in the very near future. Council members, of course, are invited to attend those meetings, or they're actually meetings if the public wanted to attend, but these are just preliminary meetings of department heads, and we will be making a presentation to the board of estimate and following the, the guidelines as laid out in our charter to meet with our deadlines for budget adoption. Chris talked about the Rodriguez Fields over on Monhegan Avenue and that Mr. Fuji has been hired. You get the joke, right? Inside joke. And the, we, we do hope to have this open up by next summer. It'll be a multi-use field. It will have, the plan is to have lighting, bleachers, and it's attached to the Heritage Trail, and it's going to be nothing but a positive thing for our community. Last but not least is the CPV, as you saw today, they are now producing power. I met with the fire chief today to get the reassurances that, that the Middletown Fire Department will have adequate training and has adequate training on how to respond to any incident there. Our understanding through Council President Rodriguez is that it is mostly self-contained, but we still need to make sure that New Hampton Fire Company, the county hazardous waste and all those have been working with our people. Jacob does have their emergency management plan. We're, we're prepared, but we think there's more that all could be doing, but we, we are prepared in case there's an incident there to respond as a Middletown Fire Department and to assist. And I don't say that as if there's something, big, big danger there. I don't want anyone to be scared, but that was one of the comments that was brought up during the, during some, many of the meetings, not just some of them, almost all of them. And I believe that's all I have for this evening. Unless you have any questions, I can end right there.
Alderman Kleiner?
Very quickly, you have pen in hand, ready to sign the Heritage Trail agreement?
We have pen in hand, ready to sign it. I believe they're voting Thursday.
Yes, I think so.
The county legislature, and we do have pen in hands. Right, I'm going to keep it in my pocket. I'm going to change my shirt, but I'm going to keep it in my pocket. We're ready.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Reports of Alderman. Alderman Byrne.
Dustin Seaborn.
Alderman John Francois.
Nothing this evening.
Alderman Kleiner?
Almost nothing this evening. I, I just want to thank everyone who came out in support of the ID program, and we will be moving that along quickly at this point. And we've been trying to do coordinating, more coordinating, I think, maybe than we needed to do, but we'll try and get that moving and then want to go home and watch the Cubs and the Rockies, so that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Cassoon?
On behalf of the people who live up on West Concling and that surrounding area, our many, many, many thanks to the city for getting that property taken down. It's been something that's been with me since I joined the council many years ago, so thank you. And on behalf of the people of Elm Street, thanks for the progress and my thanks to them for their patience with us as we try to get that infrastructure repaired. And that's all I have tonight. Reminder, next week, Neighborhood Watch, 7 o'clock.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I do not have nothing this evening to do, double negative. With respect to deportation, I told a story at the last meeting, some of you are not here or without a client of mine, and my day job is a veterinarian, and he was being deported. He had been here 20 years. I won't repeat the story, but the point of the story was that it was a lasting experience for me to know that he was leaving and not coming back, and all he took was his cat and what he could fit in a suitcase after 20 years. My day job, I get to a lot, meet a lot of people from different walks of life. I was at a horse farm a couple of years ago, and the person who was assisting me was from Ecuador, and he led the horse out, and I was doing what I had to do, and I was, I'm a chatty fellow sometimes. And we struck up a conversation. I asked him where he was from. He said Ecuador. I said, well, how long you been here? He said, oh, about a year or so. And I said, well, why did you come here? He said, well, I came here to work with horses, support my family back in South America. And I said, well, were you bilingual when you got here? And he said, no. And I said, well, what do you do with your money? I said, well, some of it I keep and some of it I send back to my family. And I articulated to him that I think for many of the people that I know who were born in this country, if I asked them to go to a different country, learn a new language, and split their income between their daily living and their families, they would find it extremely difficult. So I think there are people in various walks of life that do appreciate these experiences. And I'll share a last one. I was at a, a place of business with, who was owned by a friend of mine, it was near closing, and he said, are you leaving now? And I said, sure. He said, would you mind taking this employee home? I said, sure. He said, well, if you do, he'll save the money for a cab ride. And that young man was from Colombia, and I struck up another conversation. I said, well, how long you been here? He said, about a year. And I said, well, where did you come to be? He said, I came by myself. And part of that conversation, he was using his phone to translate because he really was not articulate in English at this time, and he was trying to figure it out. And there are a lot of people who come here, try to figure it out, and I don't think there's anybody on this council that is opposed to the ID card initiative. I did misspeak when I said two meetings because I thought it was going to be a law. But we do have to do our due diligence and work out the details, and we do understand your frustration, but this conversation has taken a lot of different turns in the last two months. And sometimes, as an individual, Alderman, I'm, I'm feeling that you come to say, well, some of you are opposed, we want to convince you. I don't know of anybody sitting on this council that is opposed to this initiative, but we are trying to work out the details. And I think with respect to the issue of foilability, I think the bottom line, it's good to kick the tires, as far as I'm concerned. The bottom line is every person eligible for this card, regardless of your background or why you get it, makes their own individual decision as to what are the benefits and what are the potential risks, and we shall see. We shall see who signs up for that card. I appreciate everybody's persistence. I did leave of the council's mailboxes the PowerPoint presentation for a capital project. The Board of Education presented that at their last meeting. It's about a $35 million project. It will be voted on in December. Superintendent Del Maro made it extremely clear that there will be no cost, no cost, no cost to the local taxpayer, and almost everybody believed him, if I understood that correctly. I do have a quick thing, I apologize, but for legislative, but it will save you a meeting, so bear with me. There was a letter from a resident regarding the noise ordinance. This person wanted to broaden its, its employment and also was not sure it was actually being enforced. I saved you all the meeting because I spoke to Council Alex Smith, and he generated this letter. I'd like to read it into the record so that this way we all knew it was answered. Dear Mr. Coffey, Dr. Paul Johnson, the Chair of the Common Council's Legislative Committee, asked me to respond to your email regarding enforcement of the city's noise ordinances. Please be assured that they are enforced. In 2016, the Middletown Police arrested 420 persons for noise violations. In 2017, 202 arrests were made. I prosecute these violations in city court, and the vast majority of noise arrests involve noise from vehicles. I do not believe that 60 feet is an unreasonable distance. 60 feet represents only about six car lanes. On the other hand, almost any noise can be heard 15 to 20 feet away. The ordinances you cite, using 15 to 20 feet inject a subjective component not present in Middletown ordinance, the noise must be excessive. Thus, at a trial, a police officer has to describe why the noise is excessive. In Middletown, on the other hand, an officer need only testify that he or she was 60 feet away and heard a noise from the vehicle's sound system. A fair number of people charged with noise violations request a trial because they believe they were not making that noise. In addition to these violations, the Middletown Police charged persons driving in faulty mufflers under State Vehicle and Traffic Code. Hope this answers your concerns. Alex Smith. The complainant has responded to that. I won't go into that, but my point at this evening is to remind everyone that it's being addressed, and it does not appear to have to appear before the legislative committee. And along with Alderman Ramkassun, I thank the comment, the Department of Public Works. Elm Street is happier, West Main Street is happier, and they all appreciate our level of communication. Thank you very much for your perseverance.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Do just want to touch on Monday, the 8th, though it is Columbus Day, we will still have our constituents' meeting, 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. Also, just really quick, I attended the Tutter Truck for a little bit this weekend. It was really nice to see everyone out. Farmer's Market is thriving, really big, great, great stuff there, not just produce. It was amazing. So if you haven't been there, check it out before we end for the season, and that's going to be it. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin?
I'd like to just briefly address the, as mentioned earlier, the hateful stickers and flyers are posted at the community college by a hate group. I think this is a cowardly act, and I think this community is doing the right thing as far as the municipal IDs. We're sending a message to these hate groups, the neo-Nazis, whatever manifestation they have these days, that, you know, hate is not welcome here in Middletown, and making this a strong statement, you know, it's not here. Thank you.
Alderman Massey?
It's nice to see so many people here at our council meetings. It's, it's a nice change. I certainly appreciate it. Shannon, I do have that documentation I found in my drawer, and at the end of the meeting, I'll be happy to give it to you. I'm sorry that Pastor Williams had to leave. I was at that celebration yesterday, and, and it was a celebration of life, not of the death of his father, and he, and he was a stalwart in the city for a long time. And Jacob, I owe you a dollar. You were right, the mayor would talk longer today at this meeting than you did at the last meeting.
All right. Lastly, I am going to break a cardinal rule of mine since I've been in the council and the council president. First, Ignacio and Alfred, you brought out the secret weapon, and that was the kid. That was the kid. In December 1983, the seven-year-old kid, very handsome, very, looks really nice, strong, he crossed Canada, the border. It was snowing, it was ice. I remember somebody falling into the river. In 1988, that person got his visa. In 1996, graduated from high school. 2001, college. Went out to be the first one to graduate four-year college from his, his family. Tonight, we, we need to pass this today. The cardinal rule of mine is we're not going to The cardinal rule of mine is we're not going to move forward until we move forward with the municipal ID. What makes someone American isn't blood or birth, but the allegiance to the founding principles of faith in the idea that anyone from anywhere can write the next chapter of our country. When I say new business, I want a resolution from the floor passing the municipal IDs. New business.
Okay, we have a unfinished business. We have something. It's Alderman Burr, sponsor of resolution to close the corner of Highland at YMCA Liberty Street, location to the corner of Cantrell from 12:30 to 4:30 for the Harvest Festival in conjunction with the YMCA in Middletown Elks Lodge on Saturday, October 22nd.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr. Seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion? Roll. Alderman Kleiner.
Yeah, I just want to say I had tabled this motion, this motion resolution last.
You want to change it to you?
No, I don't want to table it tonight. I just want to explain, I did, I did talk to Nicole with Direct Department and to find out where, where exactly it was being closed. And it is going, because I'm always concerned for the people in that neighborhood who get cut off and get trapped, and also for the people in the Seventh-day Adventist Church, who, you know, along with the temple, have their services on a Saturday. And so I'm going to ask that we be sure that the pastor there, I know they've called and tried to reach him, and they haven't been able to reach him yet. So I want to be sure he gets notified. But the resolution is to close it from 12:30 to 4:30. The event is actually from 2:00 to 4:00. So that people who hear this, if they're in that parking lot off of Highland Avenue for the church, they will be able to get their cars out. And people parked along Highland Avenue at the service on that Saturday will be allowed to go. And then Cantrell and Linden Place will be open so that if you need to get around, you can go Liberty to Lenox and come down Cantrell and go past that way, or you can go Wickham to Linden Avenue and then up Linden Place and get around that way. So, you know, they, they've made every attempt to let people know, and I hope it will be successful. It just, that's why we had tabled it. We really needed more information on what was being closed, so.
Who's doing the notification? You sent some notification?
Well, Nicole from the Direct Department has really been the one organizing this. And so I did speak with Sergeant Welch, too, on the, on the traffic control. And she won't be here then, but, you know, the police department will be well informed. But I'm hoping that she or someone will, maybe will actually write a letter so that if they can't get them by phone, just so he's able to tell his prisoners ahead of time because they get big crowds on Saturday. So I want them to be aware and to know it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
New business. I'm requesting a motion from the floor. Alderman Kleiner.
You want, you want to give me a little bit of?
I would like a motion from the floor passing the municipal IDs.
What? I'm not sure I really understand.
What we talked about for a year, we need to move forward. So we can move forward, we can pass it tonight.
Well, our.
Working committee with everyone else in this room and everybody, the mayor's office, my clerk's office, which is going to take the burden of everything, and we can move forward and work together, not during at night, but during the day, and we'll meet in committee. Or you're available or anybody's available. We can pass it and work together.
But it, do you mind me speaking, Jerry?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
All due respect, I don't know what we're passing. I have no problems passing the idea, but there's no substance. We, we don't have the information. We've talked about it. I understand you want to fast-track it, and I'm 110% with that. How about saying that at the next meeting, we will have the documentation sometime between now and the next meeting, so we actually know what we're voting on. You, the concept is an, is an ID. I have no problems with that concept. Two more weeks so that we can digest what it is that's in, what the.
I, I have an idea on how to phrase it. Let's, let's do a motion for, that we resolve, that we do a motion affirming the, the creation of a municipal ID program. And we can pass that resolution that we are definitely agreeing as, as a council to create a municipal ID program. And.
Based on?
Based on specific legislation to present, be presented, let's say, within the month, hopefully next meeting, if not by November 2nd, either at the October 16th or November 2nd, but.
And the, the parameters have to be agreed upon.
Yes, well.
Absolutely. I have no problems with that.
I agree. Okay. It's a municipal ID.
I'll make that resolution.
You make it.
You make a motion?
I'll second it.
I'm making the motion, yes.
I'll second it.
John, have you got that?
I got it.
Alderman Massey seconds it. Anyone else? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Okay, resolution passes from the floor. Okay, we have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin to approve the additional funding of $87,923 for the new fire truck and authorize the treasurer to add the additional funds to the borrowing in 2019 when the truck is expected to be delivered.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson to reschedule the common council meeting from Tuesday, November 6, 2018, to Monday, November 5, not to coincide with Election Day.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to approve the leaf pickup for 2018.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois to add to Chapter 460, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 46028, handicap permits, one spot each at 5 School Street and 230 East Main Street.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman John Francois, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to approve a contract amendment from CDM Smith for the Mill Pondam Permanent Skimming Project for Amy's Kitchen Project.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Tobin. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to authorize the treasurer to transfer $800 within the DPW 2018 budget to cover the cost of gas and oil for the remainder of 2018 for the wastewater treatment plant.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Roll.
Ramkassoon.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
John Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.[1555.96]